Going live. All right, looks like we're ready. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is January 19th, 2021. Due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. This meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note, this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public hearing and public comments to address the council, please indicate that you wish to do so at the appropriate time using the raise hand feature in your Zoom browser, or using star nine if you're joining us via phone. That will alert our hosts that you wish to speak and you will be called on at the appropriate time. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis. I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman. Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Here.
Police Chief Jeff Smythe.
Here.
Community Engagement Manager Morgan Lassiter.
Here.
And Public Information Specialist John Vernon.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Harold Owen.
If we have a moment of salve for the prayer, please, just in honor of all the individuals, not only here in our country, but throughout the world who's lost their lives to COVID. Thank you. Almighty God, you've given us grace many times with one accord to make our common supplications to you. You've always promised about your well beloved son, that when two or three of us gathered in his name, you will grant our request. Fulfill now, Lord, our desires and petitions as may be best for us. Grant us strength as we continue to navigate the horrific impacts of COVID-19. In your name we pray, amen.
Next, we have a COVID-19 remembrance. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Community Engagement Manager Morgan Lassiter.
Thank you, Mayor. So as folks will remember during the work session on January 4th, there was discussion at the end of that about the opportunity for us to do a remembrance on this night. So staff worked with Recreation and Parks, John and I, and were able to get 194 luminaries that we placed outside of City Hall this evening. It's actually dark enough now for you to see them, but it is quite lovely and moving. We worked with some of our local churches down here to toll the bells at 5:30 as well. And so some of them have been doing that for longer than 5:30. So we've had many cars that have come and sat out here at the curb to kind of look at the luminaries this evening. So it's been a very, very nice evening out here in front of City Hall. John was able to capture some of this since folks were not able to be here. So I think he's got a little bit of a video and maybe some images that he's sitting here. So we have had many community members come and sit out here this evening. So I think it's been a nice success to be able to remember the folks that died here in Alamance County to date of COVID-19. So we appreciate the opportunity to do it. It was a little, I think, more moving than we thought it was going to be this evening to kind of watch our community come and look at this. So wanted to share that with the council this evening.
Thank you, Morgan. Thank you to the team for putting this together, to give us this moment of pause and reflection. One of the things that struck me is when we approved that, holding that remembrance at our work session, I think the number was 180. And watching that number continue to climb and the fact that it's not done climbing is really important for our community to recognize. This remembrance doesn't spell the end of COVID. It's just a checkpoint along the way to harden ourselves in unity to the work that still needs to be done.
Yes.
Counsel, any other comments?
So hard to believe that that many people died from COVID, just in our own community, nearly 200 people. Just amazing to me. Terribly sad for the families because many of them could not be with their loved ones while they were dying. And that's just, can't imagine what the pain of that.
Thank you. Any other counsel comments? Next, we have another remembrance this evening for city employee Tony Trolinger. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager Harden Watkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to share a little bit with city council and members of the community that are watching, that one of our city employees, Tony Trolinger, who was 61 years old, lived in Hall River, passed away suddenly last Tuesday, January 12th. Tony worked in our Water Resources Department and he was a water treatment plant operator at the Ed Thomas Water Plant, just across railroad tracks from where we are this evening. I want to share, a celebration of life service was conducted today at Low Funeral Home, Low Funeral Home for Tony. And we here at the city want to share our deepest condolences with his family. What I'd like to do is share some words from Hank Trent, who was Tony's supervisor over at the Ed Thomas Plant. And here's what Hank shared with us about Tony. Tony was a dedicated worker, devoted husband and father. He loved his wife and son like nobody I've ever met. And I would mention, and he would mention his wife Linda at least 10 times a day when he was at work. Tony was also very involved with the local high school, that being Eastern Alamance. And he was also very fond of collegiate sports. Every year at Christmas, Tony always gave each employee Christmas presents. And Hank notes that Tony outdid everybody in the building in terms of giving somebody the best present. Tony never got cross or angry, and he was one of the kindest individuals you would ever meet. He was an avid storyteller, talking about his past experiences. And his colleagues noted his stories were always captivating and humorous. He will be missed very much by the Water Resources staff. And I'd also share a few words from Bob Patterson, our Water Resources Director. What Bob shared with us is that the department will certainly miss Tony's steady presence, his pleasant disposition, and his generous nature. So counsel, I'd ask you, you know, just joining me today to express our most sincere sympathies to Tony's family and offer our condolences to his family, friends, colleagues, especially Tony's son, Caleb. Caleb Trolinger works with us here in the city's Recreation and Parks Department. So we're also keeping a close eye on Caleb and making sure we can support him in the way we can as well. So the city is extremely grateful for Tony's work, his faithful and dedicated service to the city, and would ask everyone to just join us in wishing all the best for his family.
Tony also was an avid softball player for a number of years in the Parks and Recreation Program. And the description of him fit him well. He was a competitor, but he was just a great sport, had great sportsmanship on the field, and an outstanding, outstanding player too.
Bob, I see you're on the screen. Is there anything you'd like to share?
No, you said a lot, and I couldn't agree more. Tony will be missed. He was very generous, always had a big smile, pleasant personality, just a bright spot in all our days. And we certainly wish his family the best.
Thank you for the time, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank Tony's service to the community and the way he embodies the spirit of our city employees. But those remembrances concluded, I do have a recognition. We have scouts from Boy Scout Troop One of Grove Park Baptist Church who have joined us this evening to work on their citizenship and the community merit badge. So I appreciate them joining. Scoutmaster, do you want to say anything? We're not getting your audio very clearly.
Okay, can you hear me now?
There we go.
Okay. Thank you for recognizing the troop. We have about five scouts that are participating tonight, either on Zoom or on the presentation. We're working with the scouts on citizenship in the community tonight, and had a session right before the city council meeting. And this is part of the requirement is to attend the meeting and to tell us about an issue that's being discussed tonight.
Very good. We appreciate y'all joining us. We should have a good meeting for you tonight. Talking about, ties into a lot of things, and our new citizens beneath advisory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll recognize our interim city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None.
Thank you.
Next, before council, we have minutes from our December 7th, 2020 city council work session and our December 8th, 2020 city council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second to approve those?
Make a motion that we approve those.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Ward. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the agenda. Council has it before them. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion to adopt the agenda from Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to adopt the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A to adopt a resolution authorizing the donation of two MSA Evolution 5,000 thermal imaging cameras as surplus fire equipment, and authorize the fire chief to execute an equipment donation agreement with Alamance Community College to transfer the equipment to its Fire Academy program for the training of students in that program. Item B to adopt a resolution to accept bequeathed funds for an existing purgatory trust for Daphne's Fragrance Garden adjacent to the John Robert Cronotl Senior Center, and approve budget amendment 2021-19 for maintenance of Daphne's Fragrance Garden. Item C to approve budget amendment 2021-20 for the allocation of rehab loan program income to CDBG program expenses. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda items?
A move. Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, we have a public hearing scheduled this evening. A public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from Light Industrial District to General Business District. The property is located at 2401, 2451, and 2495 Eric Lane, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 114301. This time, I'd like to recognize our Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everybody hear me and see me? Okay. Pull up some things to share on my screen. If I have the ability. Don't really want to start, but here we go.
There we go. We've got that screen share up.
Okay. Again, good evening. This request is a rezoned 25.6 acre parcel from Light Industrial District to General Business District. You'll see that hatch there on this aerial view. It is a traditional rezoning request, which will allow all uses in the general business district and does not include any conditions. The property has interstate furniture and has access from Alamance Road to Eric Lane. You'll also notice in this hatched area, it's an existing use and structures on the site. Most of you are familiar there, just to the edges, the JRs, and then a recent rezoning site. We had the former Bob Evans Restaurant is more there towards Alamance Road. The property is near existing General Business District properties and is located within a commercially developed area. The comprehensive land use plan recognizes this entire area along Eric Lane as a regional commercial area, which extends from Alamance Road primarily north, to the north side of Eric Lane to this property and beyond. Based on this point, the request is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan and compatible with the uses in the surrounding area. And I'll just throw that up for you as well. You can see this red is our regional, it's coming from Alamance Road, and it bleeds over, as I said, to this property and just beyond. You see it get a lighter shade of red, which is the commercial zoning. This request was presented at the December 21st, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and no public comments were received. The commission unanimously recommended approval of the request, and staff also recommends approval of this request. Mr. John Burton may be on the call to speak to any questions. I didn't notice before I came on, he was in attendance at the planning and zoning meeting. Staff can answer any questions you may have, and may also have consistency statements in your packet for any action on this request tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. I don't see Mr. Burton on the call. All right, counsel, any questions before we begin the public hearing? All right, with that, this is a public hearing for item one under our public hearing, the rezoning request. If you do wish to speak regarding this public hearing item right now, please use the raise hand feature located in your Zoom window, or star nine on your phone. If you're having any technical difficulties regarding submitting a request, you can always contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440. So we'll take just a moment. Just a reminder, at this time, if you do wish to comment regarding this rezoning request, use the raise hand feature or star nine. We received no public comments on this item before the meeting. With that, I see no requests for public comments. Counsel, do I hear a motion to close this public hearing?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to close? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Public hearing is now officially closed on this item. Counsel has been provided with a list of recommended motions from staff regarding conforming and non-conforming statements regarding this property rezoning. Counsel, any questions, or do I hear a motion?
I move we approve this request to rezone from LI Light Industrial District to GB General Business District. The property is located at 2401, 2451, and 2495 Eric Lane, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number 114301. This motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan, in that the future land use map in Section 4, Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan, classifies this area as regional commercial, and calls for this area to have commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent general business district. This action is reasonable and in the public interest, in that the comprehensive plan classifies this area as regional commercial, and calls for commercial uses in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Ward. Any questions regarding the motion to rezone? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. That concludes our regular public hearing items. We now move to new business. City Council will consider adopting a resolution making certain findings and determinations authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission, requesting the local government commission to sell the bonds at a private sale, and authorizing and approving the selection of the financing team in connection with the sale and issuance of revenue funding bonds of the city. This time, I'd like to recognize our Finance and Risk Management Director Peggy Reese.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. You may recall back at the December council work session, staff asked council for permission to send out a private bank RFP to see what interest there might be from private banks to be able to compare the interest rates to a public market for refinancing. Why now, you might ask? Back at the end of 2017, federal tax law changed and eliminated tax exempt advanced refunding. This meant that local governments could not use tax exempt advanced refunding on the bonds until they were callable. Instead, a local government would have to use taxable refinancing, which of course would mean a higher interest rate, and therefore cut into the potential savings on the refunding. And that's why we have waited until now. The 2010 revenue bonds are now callable in February, and the 2011 revenue bonds would be callable next year. Due to the legislation that I just changed, as I just mentioned, banks have created what is called a Cinderella option. In very basic terms, the bonds are issued as taxable until the original bonds are eligible for tax exempt status. The 2011 revenue bonds are one year away from being eligible to refund these bonds with tax exempt advanced refinancing. The city could issue a taxable bond for the first year, and then issue tax exempt bonds for the remaining years. Included in your agenda packets is a summary that Davenport prepared. They issued a private bank RFP to over 50 national, regional, and local lending institution. Seven responses were received. The interest rates on the bids received ranged from a high of 3.58% to a low of 1.33%. TD Bank and Truist were the top two bidders, with TD Bank being the top bidder with the lowest interest rates. The city can save approximately $6 million over the remaining life of the bonds, averaging about $400,000 in savings a year. There is a difference of approximately $1 million more in savings from TD Bank than over Truist, the second closest bidder. Staff recommends that council approve the attached resolution making certain findings, authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission, requesting the local government commission to sell the bonds at a private sale, and authorize and approve the selection of the financing team in connection with the sale and issuance of the revenue bonds. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. We also have Ted Cole on his phone from Davenport if you have any questions for him, and we'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Very good. Ted Cole, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Good evening. No, I thought that was a very good summary. But again, happy to answer questions if there are any. I just do want to note, actually, I guess I would say that this would be the first of two approvals for you all. All of this is subject to LGC approval, but it does, if you decide to move forward this evening, it does start the process.
Very good. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Cole or Director Reese? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Move that we adopt the resolution. Oh, you want the rest of it?
Right here, a second.
Second.
And Carol, you got that one first. So motion to adopt the resolution from Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to adopt the resolution? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you very much, Mr. Cole and Director Reese, for your assistance on this.
Hey, that's really good work.
It's a team effort. I will say that we have had institutions inquiring for over a year and a half about us refinancing these bonds. And if we had chosen to do so in July of 19, for instance, they would have had to been taxable bonds, and we would have only saved 2.6 million. So by waiting until we could get the tax exempt financing, we have substantial more savings.
Very good. All right, with that, we'll move to item three. Under new business, city council will discuss appointments and process for appointments to the advisory boards and commissions for the 2021 Community Police Advisory Team, or CPAT. This time, I'd like to recognize our city manager Harden Watkins and Community Engagement Manager Morgan Lassiter.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll get things kicked off. In an effort to help city council navigate through and develop an orderly way to help select the city's newest board, staff has some ideas to suggest for you tonight, and I'll walk through that in outline form. Morgan Lassiter's going to help me this evening as we walk through this, but we'll also may, we're on our colleagues, Rachel Kelly, John Vernon, and City Attorney David Huffman, if necessary for questions and details. So let me start real quickly, just by backing up, if we have folks that are new to the conversation this evening, in our audience, and talk about how did we get here. So beginning, I think this is something that has been talked about post George Floyd's death in May, as there was some national conversation that obviously happened in our state and in our community about is there a need for police reform, or is there a need for certain things here locally? So beginning in July of 2020, Chief, Police Chief Jeff Smythe and I began working to develop a framework for city council consideration of something that we now call the Community Police Advisory Team. And just to remind those that have heard this before, but share that with the new listeners, this was, there was a chief's advisory council back in 2016 that went defunct. And so, listen, is there a way to bring some parts of that back, and also try to be responsive to some of the things we were hearing around our state and our region about citizens being more involved in providing advice and insight to police departments? So we put together a framework for council consideration, and our three goals were this, to help improve the quality of policing in Burlington, to provide an outlet for review and discussion of police policy, and then three, to help further enhance trust and confidence amongst the community. And so council considered a charter for creation of a team of Burlington community members appointed by city council. And that happened, those formal appointments happened, excuse me, we created that charter in November of 2017. We had a number of conversations with city council through the fall, worked on some draft charter, September, October, November. And as I said, council unanimously adopted a charter on November 17th. We had an application deadline for members. The charter calls for 15 to 20 members for various The charter calls for 15 to 20 members for a various number of categories. That deadline was 12/31 of 2020. Staff forwarded all the applications, which were 55 in total to city council on January 11th. We sent you some updated information on January 15th that supplemented what was provided on the 11th. And here we are this evening for a conversation. And I believe there is some interest tonight in just talking about how we would proceed and what the process may look like. And if my understanding is correct, city council would be interested over the next couple of three weeks, talking about, you know, a decision process about how to select members. And so the Community Engagement Division will be helping you with that process and leading that process. Obviously, the, the head of the Community Engagement Division is Morgan Lassiter and Morgan will jump in with me here in just a moment. So we did get a robust community response. We had, as I said, 55 applications, which is wonderful in terms of folks being engaged and wanting to get involved and share ideas and help make their community better. 14 of those persons are outside the city limits. Six of those persons are currently serving on other boards. So I'd love to get some council input on that. So at the minimum, you have 35 applicants to consider tonight, consider this, this month before you make your decisions. So we're obviously happy to see the interest. We're happy to see the enthusiasm and both, I speak for myself and for Chief Smythe, we're both anxious to get started sometime in early 2021 when the, the group can be convened and start meeting. So let me start off with a couple of questions for council and I've alluded to those already. We'd love to get your insight and your thoughts on how to handle the applications from persons not residing in the city limits and then also how to handle applications from persons that are serving on another city board or commission. Mr. Huffman is prepared to help me with that question if you need so, need, need him to do so. Regarding that, we had, we do have an existing city ordinance that says you can only serve on one board concurrently. And so we had, did reach out to those six members and ask them if they would like to stay on their other board or move to CPAT. I think two of them preferred to move if possible. So council, I'd like to get some advice from you on that. And then second, I think that's it. So those are our questions there. And then I think once you, if you want to work, work on that for just a moment, then the next round of questions, then we know how many candidates you have. And then we, I've got another round of things for you to think about on how we move from, whether it's 35 or 55 or some number in between, down to the 15 or 20 called for in the charter. So Mayor, I'll yield the floor back to you.
Very much, manager. Councilmembers, any comments regarding the items that the manager brought up as far as city limits application, applicants or those already serving?
Is there an ordinance as well about whether or not for our current boards and commissions about them living in the city or not?
Staff, I do believe it's generally required that they do have a Burlington address that is their primary residence. Attorney, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, and that's something that we have adhered to very closely over the last three or four years.
Very good. I do appreciate, staff has provided a nice rundown of addresses and that verification. Counsel, are there other comments on the in-city limits requirement?
Have anything to add to that, but I do think that we should keep, keep it with, for residents of the city.
Yeah. I will say, I think there were some very qualified candidates who applied from outside the city limits and we, I appreciate their enthusiasm, but definitely in this case with, as staff mentioned, the significant public response, we, we do have, I think, plenty of qualified candidates who meet the residency requirement in this list. Any other comments from council on the residency requirement? Any comments regarding the, the standing policy regarding members only holding one order commission position? I know it's been generally whenever we go through boards and commissions, we, if we have somebody where we think would be a better fit on a different board, staff reaches out and asks if they'd like to switch as they did in this, this situation. We don't generally allow for two boards or commissions and I support us continuing with that policy.
I think the, the memo that Mr. Huffman had put together that we should have got before the meeting, does a really good job of going back through history and then laying out options. And I think I agree with his thought pattern, which we're talking about now is that if, if there indeed someone would like to, been given the option of, of potentially resigning from a board to be put on this board, they can certainly do that and that would continue. Our overall objective was to try to keep as many people as possible involved in local government in terms of advisory group members.
So with, with that, Councilmember Butler, did you have something on? Okay.
Just, just going to say I concur with Harold's statement, yes.
So staff mentioned, we have two members currently serving on other boards who would, who would prefer to switch to the CPAT if they are considered qualified and that's applicant 45 and 47, Mr. Thomas and Mr. Sayed. And so we have council approval for staff to consider those two members as part of the pool of candidates? Any objection to that? Yeah.
To stay on the board that they currently.
Those two are requesting to switch to the CPAT if they are approved by council. So I just wanted to call out those two candidate 45 and 47. All right, so manager, having received direction on those two items that you brought up, are there other items, you have questions from council?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I think we'll, we'll, let me, if I can recap that, we had 35 applicants that were not on a board, were in the city limits and we have two applicants that expressed an interest in switching. So I think our universal candidates is now 37. Is that correct? Okay, so of those 37 candidates, staff has met a couple of times and here's, here's some proposed next steps for city council. One is obviously you've got now lots of information to, to look through. The CPAT charter, you've been provided of copies of all the applications filled out in Google forms. So there's 37 of those now for you to work through. You have a spreadsheet summary of all applicants that tries to lay everything out in, in, in a couple of pages for you to see. We've provided a, thanks to our GIS department, provided a map for you that shows each person and where they are in the city. If you remember, there is a component of the charter that calls for geographic representation. And what we had envisioned there was at least one member from each police patrol zone. So what we provided in that map was each of the four police patrol zones. And so you can see how many members are in each. There are obviously a good number in each of the zones. So you have plenty of choices there. And then we've also provided you a, Ms. Kelly is going to share with you before we finish tonight, a summary page that shows you the member categories from the CPAT charter. So Rachel, do you have that available or Morgan, do you have that? We can just share screen?
Yeah, I think that John's prepared to share it as well.
Okay. And, and counsel, we thought this may help you just, it helped me to visualize. We started through some of this up on a whiteboard here in the office and it seemed to sort of pull the information out of the charter and then give you a different way of looking at that. So if you just scroll through. So this is a tool to be available to you. Again, these are just the categories that are in the charter that you adopted previously. And then if you wanted then to start writing, write in different names. So you see we list the patrol zones, we list, we call for folks from the local chapter of the National Association of Mental Illness, community of justice involved persons, faith community, et cetera, et cetera. So we thought we'd provide that tool to you. We'll get that out to you via email and you can use that as, if it's helpful for you. Sometimes that helps me think is just kind of, you know, our, our paper version of a whiteboard, if you will.
Got it.
So those are the resources that you'll have at your disposal. And so what we would suggest and want to get some council feedback on this, if council wanted to, you know, sort of individually think about your top 15. So it's hard to do this with, with, you know, five elected officials. You've got 37 candidates to try to fill 15 to 20 slots that have to be in certain categories. So it's a bit, a little bit trickier than our normal process that we use. So we had suggested you individually think about your top 15 candidates. And then if council was so inclined and provide those top 15, our Community Engagement Division staff would set up a time with you to have a conversation about that. Obviously, it's also challenged by the restrictions of COVID. So, you know, it, it's not exactly like we could just sit down and do this in a room. But if you would provide and share your 15 candidates, community engagement staff in a scheduled meeting either this week or next week, and you could have some discussion with them on your thoughts or if there's any clarification questions about eligibility, that sort of thing. And then we had suggested that community engagement staff would prepare a proposed, a proposed slate for council review and get that back out to you on February 5th. Then obviously gives you a little time to review the proposed slate. Maybe you want to have some discussions amongst yourselves, you know, and chat with your individual colleagues or ask questions, what about this person or did you all think about this? What other questions you might want to ask each other? And then that we would have a, prepare a revised slate of members after some of those conversations transpire on, around February 11th. And that's when the materials go out for the February 16th council meeting. So that's kind of a timeline we have laid out and then obviously formally have that on your agenda for the 16th and hopefully you've gotten close to 15 to 20 members that you all can all agree on. And again, I know there's a, an added challenge here with COVID that, that sort of knocks us off our normal procedures. Morgan, what, Morgan, what did I leave out or the other things that I was supposed to mention or things you'd like to help clarify what we've shared?
No, I think, I think my hope was just to ensure that council had received everything from me and had understanding and just reiterate that if you need to reach out to me for clarification about use of documents or tools, please do so.
And, yeah, Mayor, just to reiterate that Morgan and Morgan Lassiter and John Vernon will be your contacts from this point going forward, you know, unless you needed a technical piece of advice from me or City Attorney Huffman, but you know, they're here just to help you manage the process.
Very good. I did want to bring up, I appreciate you putting together that affiliation rubric for council members to make recommendations. Having sifted through this on my first pass, it looks like we've, we've got a lot of that covered, but there's a big question mark next to the youth category. And I think staff had noted that in the executive summary, which is that the intention early on was that that be members of the community 18 years and younger, of which we received a number of applications, but none of them residing within the city limits. And so I think now would be a good time to maybe have a council discussion about, do we want to do another call for applicants in that category? Or do we want to kind of widen that because there are some members on this applicant field who are deeply involved with youth activities and youth mentorship? And so do we feel like those members would bring the youth perspective in? Morgan, any, anything you wanted to say on that?
Yeah, I think with, I think we discussed that earlier today, that that was a missing piece with ABSS and the school system being out. I think we maybe didn't have the same paths or methods to source that representation that we probably would have. And I think, I don't know, Harden, you may speak to it a little bit better. We were, we're speaking about maybe recognizing that we might have those holes or gaps and, and being able to fill those over time as, as we, as we can, and we have the time to, to do, I think you're saying, to, to do an all call for these specific areas.
Yep. Great point, Mayor and Morgan. Yeah, Morgan's right on the target there is like, I think two of the groups we realized as we looked at these at the staff level, we did not have anybody that we could discern as under 18. A lot of folks checked, youth thinking they're just interested in youth issues. Our intention, which was not clear in the application, but was clear in the charter, but not clear in the application was to a youth, a member, you know, a person who is young. And then the other category we're missing, Mayor, is the NAMI, the National Association of Mental Illness. No one has an affiliation. My understanding is that's a group for family members, friends and family members of folks who have mental illness, maybe likened to the Alzheimer's Association represents, you know, people who are touched and or interested in Alzheimer's, you know, have family members or friends. And so we don't have anybody with a NAMI affiliation either. And so perhaps council may want to, you know, for the February, mid February deadline, appoint 18 members and then we continue recruitment, continue the recruitment of youth and/or members of NAMI. So we not want to slow down the whole group, but certainly we could catch up new members that may join, you know, later in the spring or however long it may take to find those other categories.
I think that's a really important one, especially with what policing has been doing around mental health lately. Candidate 18, I know indicated some level of skill with mental health, not that specific certification. Candidate 18 is not a resident of the city though, so. Counsel, any, any thoughts on the youth or the mental health?
As did, as did candidate 32 and 33 mentioned, mental health.
Candidate 18 actually had a educational background in it as opposed to just checking the box. But.
Well, I think any experience in mental health would be, of course, we don't know what that experience may be, but would be helpful.
Surprised that those are the only two areas that aren't covered. I thought there were, I thought there were more than that.
We can reach out to those candidates and ask for more information if you, if council would like us to do that.
I think that'd be a great idea since we've, we've already got their applications. So just to fill out that, that bullet point, understand more about their level of expertise or experience in it. Councilmembers, any objection to staff getting more information there?
Yeah, good with that.
Any objection to staff working on a plan to work with ABSS for youth delegate representation? Potentially leaving a slot open for now?
I think that's a great idea also. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. So we may move forward with filling roughly 18 seats, leaving at least one open for youth and mental health roles, should those not be available from this pool of candidates?
One of, one of the areas that occurred to me, and I'd just like people to talk about it, is I don't know that we have said anything about having someone from the judicial system. And I'm just wondering if that's not an important piece that we should also include in this.
As in a leadership role in the judicial system or somebody who's experienced in kind of law and?
This court, court system, ideally a former judge or some, something like that.
Yeah.
I don't have anybody in mind, but I'm, I'm just thinking that that's a point of view that might be helpful.
Yeah, I know candidate 24 had mentioned experience as a guardian ad litem, which would be legal representation for children in the court system, which would be good experience. Unfortunately, that candidate is not a resident of Burlington, so. But yeah, I agree with you that that experience would be, would be valuable.
You know, we have some really experienced, well-respected retired judges. It was certainly would be nice if one of those individuals could maybe be interested in being involved with this. What's your thoughts, Kathy?
Sorry?
What's your thoughts on that?
I think that would be ideal. And, and see, I really don't have anybody in mind, but I do think that that would be something that we don't want to leave out.
Does council have any thoughts on potentially having that as a full board member or possibly a liaison role? A non-vote or kind of a non-voting liaison?
I don't have an opinion on that. I think that gets, it all gets. I think that gets, it all gets complicated when you start adding those layers to it.
It's just a suggestion to kind of make that resource available. Call on the police chief regarding that item. Chief Smythe, do you have any thoughts on if you can bring that into the commission through kind of other means, or if that would be good to have as one of the members?
I think either one of those are options that are viable. I think if you want to have a designated seat for a judge or retired judge, that would be one of the things that we would perhaps want to include in a first revision to the charter so that we make sure that we include that right as a designated seat. But we can move forward at your discretion.
Council members, any thoughts regarding a designated seat for retired judge or someone with expertise in that role?
I would be fine with it moving forward to the chief's recommendation of getting that in the rewrite. Yeah, and maybe we could consider, and David and Bob comment on this, it might not have to be a judge. It could be someone else who had been involved in the court system, juvenile court system, or whatever, without becoming so specific to just one particular.
You could have a probation officer too, you know, almost anybody in the system that dealt with, you know, well, I don't know. Well, it's any number of avenues, but to go back to the point, you know, probably would be better to amend the charter if we're going to have, you know, designated seat, you know, for that individual. And I think it's probably the best to have a designated seat versus any kind of liaison or non-voting. I agree with Kathy. I don't think we should layer that in. I think people who come to the table all ought to have a sort of a same seat, equal vote at the table.
Let me just add, I think you're very fortunate. You've actually got three and four retired Superior Court judges that I can think of right offhand, two of which I know also served as district court judges who would bring a great deal of insight and to the table in this sort of committee format.
Do they live in Burlington?
Yes, they do.
Very good. So to council, we talked about reserving some seats for the youth and mental health in this first draft. To the concept that this judicial seat might be included in a first revision, do we want to ask staff to reserve a seat now? And do a call to the potential judicial candidates like we're potentially doing with the youth seat? Or do we want to fill 18 seats? And then allow that first draft to designate one later? Does that make sense?
I'm not clear. I get the impression we have to amend the charter first before we would add that position.
There's probably a scenario, having studied the charter quite a bit, there's a scenario where obviously you're a member of the judiciary, if you wanted to invite someone that hasn't already applied. I mean, they could hold the seat of representing a geographic area for now, and you could amend the charter. If you wanted to go ahead and get someone started now, I guess you're going to have to reopen for applications. So Mayor, maybe you're asking, should we hold it at 17 and then work on this over the next couple of months too? Is that, was that your?
Yeah, that was my thought, was if we just hold it at 17, and then we can fill it in the next couple of months. Or do we fill 18 and then add to that 21 seat? And then what would happen is when seats expired, we would just back it down to 20. I think it'd be simplest right now to just say we're going to hold, just put in 17 candidates in this first pass. Make that call for judicial expertise, somebody with some level of experience there that supports the CPAT. Worst case, we just call on somebody from this pool and fill it at the same time we fill the youth and mental health roles. Is that amenable to council to hold it at 17 right now?
It's fine with me. I think just getting that experience on the board would be enormously helpful for the board. I'm good with it.
All right. Staff, any other considerations? Gaps?
The two areas are what we have identified with NAMI and the youth representation as we've gone through the applications to date. I think we're viewing the conversations that John and I will be able to have with you guys one off, or will be able to discern what your top 15 are and answer any questions or do any follow-up calls that you may require to make your selections. So I think, I mean, I think that's what I hear we're moving towards, that 17.
All right. So Morgan, are you and John going to actually? Have y'all had any conversations with any of these individuals? Or are you going to, in terms of attempting to to provide information, are you going to have conversations with all these individuals or?
I've had phone conversations with the individuals that were serving on another board concurrently with this. We have not had phone conversations with other applicants to do any clarifying that we may need to do. So that is definitely in play for you guys. If you identify you need a little more information plucked out for an applicant, we're happy to make those calls and do that.
Thank you.
Any other council comments or questions?
So that says that we do a first pass on this. And then if it seems as though things aren't filled in, I don't want to ask the staff to call every one of these people, especially if some people fit clearly into one of the categories. But there may be some, there were some that I did not, could not tell what area they fit in. So if we had 10 covered to start, then maybe I would be willing to ask you to do the next seven.
That makes sense.
Any other council comments? All right, just so to reiterate, council will be provided with that rubric sheet for the different categories to make your recommendations in the coming week to staff. Staff, did you have a deadline that you want to receive those from council? I'd say Friday.
So I think we're going to maybe have Morgan just contact each of you to set up a time for a convenient time for a call one day this week or one day next week is whenever you are ready. Is that right, Morgan?
Yes, that's correct.
That way we can get some verbal feedback on candidates. That'll be good. All right. And then we'll direct staff to fill or make recommendations, nominations for 17 seats with holds for a youth member being 18 or younger, somebody with NAMI relations or experience, and then a judicial experience level seat. So should those candidates present themselves from the existing pool? I think it's reasonable for staff to make that recommendation or highlight that to council members prior to or following their meetings with staff. But otherwise, we'll plan to see a nominating list of 17 names coming forward. Any questions, Morgan?
No. No, I think it's important for you folks that, you know, the top 15, I think it's what, just, you know, it's a bit of information. So if, when we have those meetings, if we've got that 15 in mind, that's going to help John and I, council member hikes is saying, kind of narrow that down, get in there and really fill in the pieces that we can to get that proposed slate to you guys. That'd be perfect.
I will, I will add that if, and I guess we can discuss this in individual conversations, but would it be possible for certain applicants to fill more than one of their various categories? So that for, because some of them do fill the different categories. So holding a specific number for NAMI or for a youth may not be necessary.
Yeah, I don't envision those categories necessarily being hard and fast. They've always, I think in our discussions, been general kind of scope that we'd like to have all of those covered.
But one person could fill two categories, potentially?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I think that was envisioned that way. And then also, we did write a section in the charter that gives council flexibility. So it was a guidepost, you know, and then if you've got, you've got some flex, you've given yourself flexibility in the charter to deviate slightly if you need to.
Very good. Any other council comments, questions?
Mayor, I'd say one thing if we're wrapping up, I want to thank Morgan and John for their outstanding work. They've done a ton of work behind the scenes. It's not exactly visible to get us to have this nice neat format for you and have all the information in one place. They've worked really, really hard to do that, so I want to thank them for that.
Yeah, I will thank them as well. It's made it a lot easier to flip through and see all the candidates, especially with this many in the pool. All right. Any other comments on agenda item number? All right. So council members, keep an eye out for the meeting schedule request from Morgan and John and make your notes in the meantime regarding candidates to recommend in your top 15. And if anyone listening thinks they'd be a good candidate for that youth seat, the NAMI seat or judicial seat, please contact staff. Morgan and John would be happy to help you get an application in. Or if you know a friend or family member, other Burlington resident would be a great candidate. We'd love for you to recruit them. All right. With that, that concludes our regular agenda items. We moved to public comment period. Public comments could be submitted up until 5:00 PM today via email at publiccomments@birlingtonnc.gov. And then now, if you are on the call and wish to make a public comment, you can use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine on your phone. If for any reason you're having connection difficulties or technical difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440. It looks like we do have a public comment from Brad Smith. Brad, if you're on the line, you can speak at this time. Brad, are you with us? Brad, we can't hear you. If you could unmute. I asked staff to work with Brad Smith and see if they can get a connection fixed there and either give time later in this public comment period or receive those comments in written form. Next, it looks like we have Britten Lee. Britten Lee, you may speak at this time.
Hi, this is actually Alex Alfonso, not Britten Lee. I'm on my wife's iPad, sorry.
Welcome back, Alex Alfonso.
Thank you, thank you very much. Here, once again, good evening, Mayor, Council, Alex Alfonso. My wife and I own a home here at the 1100 block of Hawthorne Lane.
You could state your Cool Street address just for the public record.
1105 Hawthorne Lane. I'm here to, once again, to prophylize about the good word of disc golf. Wanted to address a couple of the comments that were made last meeting about, you know, the possibility of having a disc golf course at the valley. It was brought up that disc golf is a free game to play. I think this is a little, it's inaccurate and it's a little misguided. We, as I said before, I have a, I play in an underground disc golf club, which is a private disc golf club here in Burlington. When I say we boasted about 100 dues-paying members every year, what I mean is we have members that buy into an annual tournament every year at a certain date. That's kind of the start of our season. We sell bag tags there for either $20 if you're renewing or $30 if you're a new member. That gives you a kind of a player's pack and a bag tag that you keep on your disc golf bag. It's kind of a ranking system and you play for those tags throughout the year. We meet every weekend, usually at Cedar Rock Park or at Springwood Park or one of the local parks. We even travel about an hour away each, once each month to a new park to play a new course. Each time we play, we ask people to give $10 is for like our weekly show up meeting. So they show up to, like, let's say Cedar Rock Park, and it is free to play there, the course if you want. But they volunteering, come in, they pay their $10 and we play one round of golf. So to say that is, that it's a free sport or people wouldn't pay to play disc golf is, I think, not accurate. If you give them the opportunity, and if Burlington does that here at the valley, they will pay to play. Also, there's another opportunity for tournaments to be held there. Big tournaments that can bring in a lot of money. If you see some of the apps that we have for playing disc golf, UDisc is one of them that lists tournaments available in your area. You can see a lot of them filling up very fast right now. And you pay $50 to $60 to enter into a tournament. Also, another issue I wanted to address about this is something that I think Mr. Butler touched on also. Mr. Owens and Tony Laws had brought up that it would be a little tricky putting the disc golf course on the golf links. I think this is also, I think, something that maybe you're not understanding quite. We're not playing different games on the same area. We're playing the same game with different equipment. So it would just be like putting extra holes out on the course. I would even venture as far as saying that you could put disc golfers on the same card as traditional golfers, and there would be no conflict whatsoever. There wouldn't be a big drastic operational change at the valley. You, disc golfers would go on the exact same tee sheet as golfers. They would use maybe different pads. They would stay off the greens and there would be no added maintenance onto the course, except, you know, you're bringing in money. It's a win-win. This is real easy to implement. And to give you an idea, I don't know if you've ever seen that movie Tin Cup, is a Kevin Costner movie. He, there's this one scene in the movie where he needs some money to enter the US Open or some big tournament like that. And he challenges another golfer, but instead of using clubs, he uses a spade shovel to drive and he's using like a garden rake to putt on the greens and things like that. And he beats this guy at golf using these other implements. It's a cartoon, it's kind of funny way to show it, but it's kind of the same concept that we're talking about here. And then lastly, I wanted to touch on Kathy Hikes or Ms. Hikes. I appreciate your comments and from your perspective, I did want to touch on that. Yeah, you're right. This probably doesn't seem like the most important or pertinent thing, priority that the city might have right now, especially with everything else going on with the pandemic and all the other issues that we're facing. But this is something that, like I said, disc golfers have been trying to do here for a long time. And it seems like a real easy fix. And with everything that the pandemic has exposed about how some people are really shut out of, certain demographics are really shut out from certain things because of either price point or whatnot, this would be a way to actually address one of those issues. Because disc golf and golf has been one of the things that you have actually been able to continue doing during this pandemic. You know, I haven't stopped golfing since, you know, the beginning of last year. And it's really, I can't say enough about it. It's been great to be able to do that and have a little bit of normalcy in that way. And I think bringing that to the valley, opening it up to a greater cross-section of the community would really make a statement that the city government in Burlington is listening to this community. And also, it would be nice to have some kind of timeline with the disc golf community or communicate with us a little bit more. I know a disc golf course had already been approved for the woods through there at the Valley Golf Course. And, you know, the work had been done to install it. And I think all that needed to be really done was bring in the baskets. And that was yanked away sometime last year. That started kind of when I got into it. But it seems like we've been getting mixed signals or mixed statements from the city about how we could go, you know, move forward with this. So I hopefully would like to get someone reaching out to maybe give us a timeline or have some kind of liaison with the city. a timeline or have some kind of liaison with the city with, uh, some people that I could put together in the disc golf community to, to give us an idea of, of, of how we could, uh, you know, push this forward. Uh, thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Alfonso. Appreciate your comments. Next we have Andy Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds, if you're with us, you can speak now.
Say, uh, good evening, council and, uh, mayor. This is Andy Reynolds from twenty-six sixteen Rolling Meadow Lane in Burlington. And, um, I'm also advocating for the disc golf course at the valley. And I wanted to just touch on a couple of things that Alex hadn't mentioned. Um, as we know, golf has accelerated through the pandemic and so has disc golf. Um, Tony Laws has access to the counters at Cedar Rock. And I would just ask if the city could look at the numbers from twenty nineteen into twenty twenty and see how those rates have increased. Um, and it'll show you that there is a strong demand for another disc golf course out here. And we have the, the luxury of having a city municipality with a golf course. And we just asked that, you know, we, we use some of the property lining the, the original traditional golf course. Um, there's a course that just opened up in Cary that has eight thousand people in one month. And as Alex said, you know, people don't pay to play here, but in this unique situation for the city of Burlington, we, we could charge. And this, this is a trend that you're seeing across the United States that I call it a hybrid course, but they call them dual courses to where this is fully functional. Um, disc golfers will fill in tee times that aren't filled yet. You're, the course will be, uh, pretty much to capacity. And, um, another unique situation is that the disc golf community, we have such a strong, um, presence in, in Burlington that we would come together to put this course together. It wouldn't be, that, that part of the process will not come out of the city's funding. We're just looking for baskets and, and, uh, an extra location.
Can I ask Andy a question? Uh, is this, uh, we talk about disc golf, e- e- especially out of Cedar Rock. Is it, uh, normally played by, by foursomes or what's the number of groups of, of individuals per hole? Uh, or go off together? Or is it two groups, uh, like two foursomes, person with tee and then another group out in the, out in the, uh, fairway or whatever?
It would, it, it's generally the same as traditional golf. You'll have two players or four players. Um, and it, it plays, the, the scoring is exactly the same as traditional golf. The idea is the exact same. It's just different equipment. And, um, the pace of play would be a little bit quicker for disc golfers because you're playing in feet instead of yards. But the way the course could be designed, it would, it would flow exactly with the direction of golf in, at the same pace. And this trend is, is, is really, I think there's something like thirty courses in California alone already, um, that are dual disc golf and traditional golf courses. And it's a great family sport. My fiancee's into it. My daughter, she's five. There, there's, there's a program that I would like to, uh, bring, i- if we can do this, I would like to bring what's called the Edge, the Educational Disc Golf Experience. And it's, it's focusing on the youth. And then, you know, that, we, we just want to sit down with the city and, and, and show you a proposal of what could be done out here to include youth, to, to bring events that will actually be profitable in the long run on such a small investment.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Appreciate your comments.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, hope, uh, Harold, did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it did. Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe we can talk more sometime. Yeah.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, appreciate it. Let's see, we're, have we been able to reach Mr. Smith, Mr. Brad Smith? All right. Clerk, do we have any email comments?
Um, city council did receive twenty-five public comments via email today. These comments have been provided to city council. And the topic of the comments received pertains to the installation of disc golf at the valley course in Burlington. I believe Brad Smith was one of those comments as well. So I've notified him that even though we can't reach him, he's, his comment has been submitted.
Very good. All right. Any, if anyone else is on the call and wishes to speak during our public comment period, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if you're joining us by phone at this time. All right. Looks like we have no further requests for public comment. Um, manager, uh, related to the volume of comments regarding disc golf, is that a topic that you could work with staff on over the coming weeks or month to bring us some insights?
We'll be happy to, mayor. I, I, I know that our, uh, pro Jonathan Dudley has been engaged and, and has some thoughts o- on this subject. So we'll make sure to, uh, get him in the conversation. Obviously we've tasked him with running, uh, an operation at the Valley Golf Course and turning around financially. Uh, so we certainly want him in this conversation, giving advice. I know Mr. Laws has had conversations, uh, for several years with the disc golf community. So we'll certainly want to get him involved in the conversation as well. Um, would you like us to formally report back at a future work session? Is that what you're suggesting?
Uh, I think that would be my preference. Council, would a, a future work session presentation be helpful for all of you to kind of understand the full scope of what a hybrid? I'd like to see what hybrid golf course operations look like and how they manage fees and, uh, balancing the golf and the disc golf experience in a way that helps support the course. Are there other items that you'd like staff to bring together? We have a work session in February, on February first, March first, and, uh, April fifth.
Why don't we give them to March to put, to, to give us a little more time to put this information together? Yeah, I would agree with that.
Yep. All right. Okay. Without objection, we'll see a staff report regarding disc golf at the valley and feasibility on March first.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Ward, any further questions?
No problem. Sounds good to me.
All right. All right. We appreciate that public comment with, at this time moves to city council comments. Do we hear any city council comments this evening? All right. I will extend a, a thank you again to all the staff and members who helped with the COVID remembrance today, recognizing the hundred and ninety-four members of our community who have lost their lives. Special thank you to all the businesses and, uh, faith organizations who remembered the event as well. It was truly a moving experience to be standing in front of city hall and hear the church bells all across our city ringing. Um, you don't hear that every day. I think it's a very special moment that we've created for everyone to reflect. Do also want to recognize that vaccine distribution events are continuing in our community. It's been an all hands on board effort from our staff to support the county agencies, uh, as they bring those events to the community. Uh, we've been, I've seen tremendous outpourings of folks looking to get their vaccines and we appreciate that enthusiasm as we move towards, uh, getting our community vaccinated in a safe way that helps us overcome this pandemic. You can continue to find out information about vaccine events on the Alamance County COVID webpage through their hotline as well as through the Burlington COVID webpage. Obviously tomorrow is inauguration day. We hope folks find a, a safe way to celebrate the peaceful transition of power in our democracy tomorrow. And, uh, mark your calendars if you haven't already for February fourteenth, uh, next month, we will celebrate our city's one hundred and twenty-eighth birthday and Valentine's Day. So we hope y'all find a great way to celebrate wonderful event. Counsel, any other comments? All right. Appreciate everyone, uh, joining us this evening. And with that, we are adjourned.
Good evening. You care. Night, everybody.